I have six o'clock and I would like to welcome everybody to the May 28th meeting of the New Bern Board of Alderman tonight. The prayer will be given by Alderman Bobby Askey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to introduce to you one of our city employees, Mr. Victor Salgado. He's a customer service representative and he is going to lead us in prayer tonight. Victor.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Board of Alderman, all citizens, thank you for this great opportunity. If you would join me, please. Heavenly Father, we come to you and thank you, Lord, for this great opportunity that we have to come together and call on your name in prayer, Lord. There are many places where we are unable to do this in the world and some places even here in the country, so we are blessed, Lord, that we are able to come together and do this. Lord, you've asked us in your word to pray for our leadership and that's exactly what we do here today, Lord. Lord, we ask for wisdom, open mindedness and discernment, Lord, so that the decisions made here today are in keeping with your will and in your command, Lord. In the name of the Lord Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Do you want me to pledge allegiance? Patrick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's have a roll call.
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris, she's here.
Here.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Best.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Okay. Is everybody good with the agenda? Any changes before we get going? We'd like to welcome Alderman Bernard White to the meeting tonight and I see sitting next to him is zoning administrator Bernard George. Good to see you guys here tonight. First item of business is the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda as stated.
Second. Motion and second is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same. Motion carries. Item number five, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. The Board, as part of the city's match for the EDA grant for the City Market Workforce Development Training Center project, also known as the Volt Center, the board approved funding in the amount of $619,407. A request for financing proposal was sent to 17 different banks. Upon reviewing the responses, BBNT offered the lowest finance charge for the life of the loan. The proposed financing in question is for 10 years at an interest rate of 2.78 percent with loan fees of $5,900. There's a memo that's included in your packet and we're requesting of the board tonight to conduct a public hearing and consider adopting a resolution to finance the City Market Workforce Development Center project in that amount.
Does the Board have any comments, questions before I open a public hearing? This.
I'll have some comments afterwards.
Yes, ma'am. Are you gonna, you do it now?
No, wait here.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to open a public hearing. Anybody who'd like to come up and ask questions, make comments concerning item number five, you're welcome to come up at this time. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same. The Board have comments at this time?
I do, I have a question. Mr. Stevens, you ever get me some information on the breakdown of the costs? Again, I want to make sure the citizens understand that this is an amount of money that we had to propose based on the fact we could not use the DOT grant as a match. That's correct, right? And then we showed that the total cost was the 2.596, that's the total project cost. I just want to make sure that we're not, we don't need additional funds, that this is it, it does cover the project. I'd ask for like a breakdown of the project cost.
Yeah, Mr. Savatelli has been working on that, so he's got, I think he's got some numbers to provide to you right now, so we'll try to give those to you as best we can.
Okay. I mean, was there anything above, I guess, I'll keep it simple, was there anything above and beyond the 2.3, $3 million contract that we had with room construction?
Yes, ma'am. The overall construction costs are currently budgeted for 2.431 million for the, for this project. That's where we're, that's where we stand.
Wait, where did the extra, because the EDA approved budget, unless you've made a change, was 2.3 and then there was contingency, of course, architect, grant administration, so do you combine some of those fees in there?
Yes, ma'am. Some of those costs were combined, the inspection fees, the contingency, we're all combined in the construction contract.
Okay. That makes sense, then.
And any of the budgeted change orders had to be approved by EDA as well and all of it followed as required.
So by approving this tonight, basically, we're just a placeholder. If we don't spend this money or we find other grants or whatever, it's just a placeholder, is that correct?
Ma'am, this is for, this is actually to approve the financing. We will be taking out the, the LGC will be approving it on next week. This will be the $4,600,000.
So this money then is going towards the construction contract, is that correct, to pay their bills?
Yes, ma'am.
Because that's coming due and that's why you need the money?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mayor, thank you.
Any other questions, comments concerning, concerning item number five?
Mayor, if not, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt a resolution to finance the City Market Workforce Development Center project.
Second. Motion and second, is there further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Stevens, item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number six is a public hearing and consideration of the Board to adopt a resolution to finance roadway improvement projects. This item is to fund roadway improvements to Oaks Road and a portion of Trent Road. The city will utilize proceeds from debt financing. Request for financing proposal was sent to 17 different banks. Upon reviewing the request, BBNT once again offered the lowest financing charge for the life of the loan. The amount of financing, amount to be financed will not exceed $1.6 million and the proposed financing is for 10 years at an interest rate of 2.78 with no loan fees. Memos included, once again, by Mr. Savatelli in your packet. Will answer any questions?
Board, any questions at this time? Seeing none, I'm gonna open a public hearing. Anybody who'd like to come up, ask any questions concerning item number six, comments, you're welcome to come forward. Second. We have a motion and second is there further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed, the same.
Mayor White make a motion that the Board adopt a resolution authorizing the refinancing of the roadway improvement project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second is there further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Best.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries, item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven is an update on the Stanley White Recreation Center. We have some folks here that are going to give us an update on that. As you recall, the city contracted with MBF Architects to review and evaluate city-owned buildings that were substantially damaged during Hurricane Florence. The evaluation for Stanley White Recreation Center has been completed. Mr. Ure from, who is the architect with MBF Architects is here. He's going to discuss the results of the damage restoration evaluation, a copy of which is provided in your packet. There's a brief memo in there also from Mr. Hughes, Director of Parks and Recreation. So at this point, if this pleasurable is board, then I'll turn it over to Mr. Ure and let him present.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Board, good evening. Thank you for having us. As you already know and has been an overview given, we have been engaged by the city to aid in the Hurricane Florence disaster recovery assessment. That work covered several buildings, but tonight I'm here to report on the Stanley White Recreation Center, which is the largest and most heavily impacted, at least in terms of a financial point of view. Essentially, we were asked to evaluate three probable costs for that facility, the first of which would be a cost to repair it, to make it usable as is, the second being a cost to demolish the building, and the third being a cost to replace the building. And obviously, the demolish cost and the replace cost would go together. I'm just going to cut to the chase. The estimate of probable cost to demolish the building is about 1.5 million. In your agenda packets, you'll have our full report, which has a detailed accounting arriving at that number. The estimated cost for demolition is about $630,000. And then lastly, the estimated cost for replacement is about just shy of 7.4 million. All of these estimates have been compiled in a manner that is of an appropriate format for FEMA and so that also influenced some of the outcomes. We did take opportunities to adjust our unit prices to attempt to count for local conditions. Obviously, all of us who were affected by the storm and are trying to make repairs, we've noticed that tradespeople are very hard to locate and then once you locate them, they cost more than you had anticipated. And so those kinds of adjustments have been built into these numbers. Yes, ma'am.
You said the 1.5 million is for the demolition or?
For the repair of the center as it is now.
It would cost 1.5 million to repair it as is?
Correct. And when I say as is, when we run our figures for the replacement building, we are accounting for code compliance and elevating the building above base flood elevation. So the Stanley White Recreation Center was built about 1972, '73, as memory serves. At that time, it was compliant, but of course, we now have new flood elevations and if we were to replace that building, we'd want to elevate it.
And that's included in the 1.5?
No, that's the difference. In other words, when I say to repair Stanley White as is, it is still below flood elevation and it still remains a risk, in my opinion, in terms of the future of it.
And I guess insurance or FEMA would not cover the 1.5, is that correct?
I do not think so and to, again, we are working with, very closely with your consultant, Disaster Recovery Services, and so the repair estimate had more to do with the fact that you had two insurance policies covering the structure, one of which you got full payment on, as I recall, the other of which was somewhat substantially below, I will say, the other insurer. And so between those two, we demonstrated without a doubt that the building is substantially damaged as defined by FEMA and then also we identified a number of shortcomings that raise that lower insurance estimate to a point where you'd get full value for your policy.
So Trip, so the public will know substantially damaged buildings means that it cannot be repaired because it cannot meet the current code, is that correct?
That is FEMA terminology for when you're seeking funding from FEMA to help take care of those damages, something that's substantially damaged, you know, cannot be reused once those funds come into play. And I'm hoping Corey Spalding is coming up right here beside me because he is your consultant from the Disaster Recovery Services and without a doubt, he could explain that much better than I, but I think I've roughly got that right.
The purpose behind, can you come to the mic? The purpose behind them doing the exercise for the, for the repairs to the building was, there was conflicts between the two insurance companies and the National Flood Insurance Program did up an estimate that was severely lacking in many areas and so therefore to receive the policy limit under them, this work product was put together to demonstrate what the repair costs were. The building cannot be repaired because it is below the base flood elevation, hence the cost to replace it was also put together by them. Did that answer your question?
Is this the replacement index to replace it and rebuild in that same location cost?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And the 7.4 million, that's FEMA? That would be FEMA money or are you saying this is the two insurance companies combined together?
So the 7.4 million is our estimated cost to replace the building. Where the funding comes from is more of a policy decision.
Have we received? Yeah, that's the 428, that's what we're applying.
So essentially, the $7.4 million estimate that he put together was submitted to FEMA and last Thursday, I believe it was the 23rd, I received an email from the FEMA Program Delivery Manager that said that she had taken that work product and sent it off to their FEMA's special teams unit to do an analysis of it, to work towards determining the FEMA eligibility and the FEMA dollars that are eligible for that project. So it's a work in progress at this point in time with, and I will say, the excellent work product that was put together by them.
Oh, McKinsey, if you have a question?
Yes. The current elevation now, what is that, the current elevation?
The building has two finished floor elevations, okay? The lowest of which whereby you classify the whole building is at six feet.
Now?
Now. Okay, we have to be at about 10 feet to be above base flood elevation, so we're four feet too low.
Okay. So what about the surrounding properties, once that elevation takes place? Would that have any effect on runoff, on anyone else in the area?
It will not and we've been very careful to elevate simply the footprint of the building as well as we've elevated part of the parking lot. So I'm gonna go through some numbers, I hope I don't confuse you, but if we elevate just the footprint of the building around the edges about four feet, we've introduced a number of ramps and steps, so it's handicap accessible. To help minimize that differential, the parking immediately adjacent to the building, there are two areas of that parking lot and you can visually see that in the reporting that we have in your packet. The upper level, we'd raise about two feet to help minimize the total distance and then we'd leave the remaining bay of parking at the six foot elevation. Okay, and the reason I say it's not going to impact any of the adjoining properties is because the impervious area is the same. We're just manipulating the heights to get the best accessibility we can to meet codes and requirements.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Trip, I may be getting ahead of it, you have also had an engineer to look at the ground, doing maybe core samples or whatever it is you guys do to make sure that the ground is suitable for rebuilding a building out there?
We have talked about that, we have not done any borings, but we have a suspicion and you will find this in our report underneath the replacement discussion, that a great deal of masonry stress fractures were seen in the building during our observations. And many of you know that our office renovated Stanley White Recreation Center around 2010. Any types of deficiencies like that were repaired at the time, but it's our opinion that there are more numerous instances and that those cracks, those stress cracks are larger than what we saw for the first 40 years of service of that building at the time we renovated. Our thought is, and this is just based on experience, generally speaking, lower lying areas have a lot of clay in the soil. And for those of you who aren't familiar with construction, clay is not conducive to supporting buildings because it expands and contracts when it gets wet, depending on its amount of moisture content. Obviously, when you flood a site like the Stanley White Recreation Center, if we were to take borings, we expect to find a soil with a very high degree of clay content. And our theory is, when flooded, that soil got saturated and it expanded. And when it expanded, it amplified differential settlement underneath the building, causing those cracks. Now that the flood waters have receded, the soils have naturally migrated to their natural content, moisture content, you know, the building's back down where it was. So part of that replacement cost estimate, that 7.4 million, is we anticipate that driven pilings, probably wood pilings, would be necessary, but as you point out, Alderman Astor, we need to do some borings to confirm these things, these theories.
So what is your expert opinion on putting the building there with the information you just shared with us and 10 years or 20 years to go with that? That used to be a trash pile when I was a kid. It was a dump site.
Right.
It was a very poor site of land then, so from what you just shared with us, it's a possibility anything could be going on underground.
First of all, I have to issue the disclaimer that I'm not a geotechnical engineer and those are the folks who would perform the borings and then give us a bearing pressure. But short of that, I would say I'm very optimistic that pilings could overcome a number of conditions like that. Obviously, I don't know what the details are at this point and I can't conclusively say there's not a situation that might preclude us from rebuilding on that site. But given relatively normal circumstances, pilings would take care of that problem.
Just trying to get all the information that I can get as a person to share based on what I know about the land itself.
Right. And then we've heard similar rumors, you know, about the condition of the subsurface soils.
Okay.
Alderman Odom.
Trip, your 7.4 million estimate, that is to provide a comparable building, obviously new materials, but a building with the same functionality that the existing building has, correct? So it's not bigger, it's not better, it's exactly like it was, just in today's, modern day cost.
That's correct. The only exception is we would be code compliant in a number of instances, that we are not them. Thank you.
And this may be, I'm sorry, this may be a question for Corey, I'm not sure our even, the city manager, but has the insurance company paid the city yet for the damages of that building? Or JR, whoever can answer that one?
We just went over that this morning, as a matter of fact. Your NFIP, National Flood Insurance Program carrier, has paid 346,000 out of 500,000. Your insurance agent, Jess Quinn, in conjunction with us, just submitted a package to the, to the adjusting firm that handles that claim and we provided them with the documentation that they asked for, which included the repair estimate that Trip had performed. So we anticipate that a supplemental payment up to the $500,000 policy limit will be coming from there, but to answer your question, under that policy, you've received 345,000, somewhere in that area there. Under your main insurance policy, you have received $250,000 advance and?
Advance?
Was the, was the 300,000 received?
No, not received yet.
We've been, we've been told that a three, an additional $300,000 advance has been asked for by the insurance company and then also we've been informed that another $600,000 advance has been requested from the insurance company for a combination of wind and flood damages, not necessarily just the Stanley White Center. And there's a meeting on Thursday to discuss many issues involving the insurance claim. It's an ongoing process and so they have advanced monies and there are some issues, but I will state that based upon everything that we've seen, we see no reason that you will not receive the full $1 million policy limits under, under the flood insurance policy that you have for there, plus your wind damages. Did that answer your question, sir?
It did. They're just slow paying it out. I mean, what has it been, eight months now?
The flurry of emails and the frustration has been beyond what would be expected and we think it's going to culminate Thursday. I've shared a bunch of information with JR that we, we've talked about, about how they're working to settle the claim and the frustrating part is, is that we feel that this should be a no-brainer, that they should have just paid the policy limits by now, it's obviously that they're going to have to, you know, plus the wind damages and we don't know why they haven't, so we're working to get to.
So you feel comfortable that they're gonna pay the claim fairly quick now that you've provided them with the information?
I won't go on the record for that one. This has been very frustrating. This has dragged on for like three months now, we've been going back and forth asking for information as to why and haven't been able to get, get an answer as to why they haven't issued a payment.
I think if we don't receive payment, Mr. Stevens, if we don't receive payment soon, I think a nice letter from the city manager or either the city attorney wouldn't know when would be appropriate.
I was just, literally was just discussing that with Scott, that if it's necessary, we'll have a very strongly worded message to them that we are getting ready to pursue legal action if we don't because we have proven beyond shadow of a mite and probably y'all's as well, that the damages sustained have been far greater than what the policy limits are. So I'll be happy to sit in that meeting on Thursday if I need to.
Well, I mean, months ago, and I'm saying at least four or five months ago, we submitted a claim package for the flood end of your policy that went, I believe it was at 3 to 3.5 million dollars, that was, and it didn't include all, obviously, all of your losses or damages, it was just to document that the damages were far in excess of your million dollar policy limits, hoping to stimulate a payment from them with that demonstration. And since that submittal, we've gotten a promise of a further advance that hasn't come forward and no, no comment on the submittal.
This is my concern, this has nothing to do with Stanley White, but we're approaching hurricane season again and it's, it's time for us to start getting some of this money back in so we can be prepared if this was, God forbid, if this was to happen again. Done?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I have more of a comment. I think I was trying to understand what Alderman Odom was saying in regards to with the 7.4 million that if we rebuild it there, we're basically probably gonna get the same style of structure and nothing really new except for that it was elevated? Am I understanding that you were, okay. So I think it would be a great idea for us as a board to direct the staff, to maybe have someone come out and possibly look at the Days Inn location or another location to actually draw up some ideas, because I would not want 7.4 million dollars to go back to Stanley White and it look and be what it is when that's a lot of money, when we can give that community more amenities and a bigger facility, a state-of-the-art facility, that's how I feel, but I want to, you know, hear from, you know, my constituents, but I feel like at this point, we have some money, especially if we have an advance on this insurance, to go ahead and get some drawings rendered from different locations. I think Days Inn is a perfect location or the old, over by the George Street, I know that was brought up to kind of map out and kind of show like how we did with Kidsville and Martin Marietta, to kind of get the, you know, the citizens involved and to say, okay, they hear this update, this is what you can get at Stanley White in this current location and this is what you can get, these other options, so that we can kind of move, you know, especially if we have some money and we don't have to worry about this old site, we can start building and construction and doing what we need to do for another site and if that's what people agree on and we vote on that.
We would, we would guarantee though that, I mean, we would, the only way I would do this is if we guarantee that it would always be called Stanley White.
Right, yes, I agree with that.
I think that's the important note here, is that it celebrates the life of someone very important in the community and as long as we would all agree on that, that would help me in my decision.
Because, you know, based on the research, it sounds like we don't have some issues with the ground, it just seems like it's gonna be something on top of another and we're investing all this money and this community deserves to have something state-of-the-art and they deserve a lot for 7.4 million dollars. So I just think if we can all get on one accord, show hands or something, where we can kind of start that process so the citizens know that we haven't forgot them, that we still care about Stanley White, but they need to understand that this is option A, going back to Stanley White, or B and C, so that we kind of, you know, get the community involved, I think that's something we should do.
Alderman Best.
All my best. Yeah, well, now, I know 7.4 million dollars, that's a lot of money, but Alderman Harris, we've already heard from the public, and they're very adamant about wanting Stanley White to remain in the location where it sits.
But we have needed the information though.
I know, I know, I'm just, so, in order for me to justify coming here tonight with a 7.4 million dollar figure here, and that does not include that there's probably going to be problems, as you're saying, there may be problems with the land, I think that should have been taken into consideration before this figure was put before us. If you're telling me, I'm hearing you correctly, there's maybe possible problems with the land.
I think you're hearing me correctly, but let me help refocus the conversation. What gets done with the money is a policy decision by this board. You've hired us right now to estimate a replacement building that fits the definition of what FEMA evaluates, which is the exact same building on the exact same site. And so, part of the 428 program, that's what they will potentially reimburse. I think once you get the money, you will go through a public process that's already started to some degree with the public, in terms of these are our options for rebuilding going forward, and it may very well be a different site that you choose. But at least within the constraints of this study, don't confuse this as saying, this is what you need to do.
Oh, no, no, no.
Trip, the local expert says, you need to rebuild it where it is. We're simply just trying to maximize the benefit that you can leverage out of FEMA, so that we may not get the whole 7.4 million, but whatever comes of it, then you'll go through that process of determining a better Stanley White that may look different, certainly will, it's a, you know, 45-year-old building, it will look newer, obviously.
Just to add to Mr. Stevens, I think, and he's stated it very eloquently, and I think the policy decision that the board needs to make in this matter takes into account the public's input, but you also need to take into account the build back better and more resilient, and what this community as a whole, and the community within the Duffin Field area and the Five Points area needs. If you build, now, I'm just thinking back to this hurricane, you remember, we operated West New Bern Recreation Center as a shelter for about two months, at least afterwards. And what his proposal does not change is the ground elevation entirely around Stanley White Recreation exists at about 4.5, correct?
Yeah.
So, one thing to consider is, is if you ever wish to use Stanley White Recreation Center as a potential other shelter for our community, you sure don't want to be delivering people to that shelter while it may be built at elevation 11, based on new standards, you're going to be delivering them in boats. So, when you talk about building back better, building back more resilient, and thinking about the fact of whether or not you want to build back a community center, recreation center, that could potentially be used for other uses during hurricane preparedness, and Mayor, I think you and I heard up there at DC about, you know, City of Wilmington, they are sitting here discussing, what if we get a category three, category four, category five hurricane? We don't have any shelters that can withstand that. Potentially, there could be grant funds out there that we could potentially match with this money, that we could get through the mitigation process, and maybe get us a shelter that might be able to withstand worse storms, and built at a higher, better location. So, those are all policy decisions that the board needs to consider. We can go back where it was, build it back as Mr. Stevens has presented to it, and we know kind of what that cost is going to be now. The question is, is that the policy decision that the board wishes to make? Do we want to move forward with something different at a different location, but within the community? Do we want to add to it? What do we want to do? That's the things. Right now, he is simply bringing together the facts, so that we have already submitted to FEMA through the mitigation process. Now, it's in their hands to evaluate the validity of his evaluation versus what the insurance companies and replacement costs are, and then at that point, hopefully, we'll get a positive response from them, and when we do so, then we kind of have some decisions we've got to make.
So, you're saying ultimately, we need to wait until we got a correct dollar amount before we go out in the community and give different options in different locations?
I think that would be a very appropriate action.
Did staff find out about the grant that we did, the million-dollar remodel job back in 2010? How does that impact?
We are required by the part of grant that we receive to continue to offer the same services that that grant required during the operation. So, whatever we wrote in that for...
At the same location or an alternative location?
It can be in an alternative location. We can get an approval to move it to an alternative location, it has to be approved through them, but that's very simple things. It's basically providing the same service in the same square footage. Correct me if I'm wrong, Paul, is that correct? But that is basically what they're requiring, and that's for a period of...
Trip, could you give us an extraction on the difference in an average sole condition area versus a marginal area? Did you do an extraction of what the value engineered cost difference would be between one location versus the other?
We do have that cost estimate, it's in the line items in your report. I apologize, I don't have that exact number, but I can give you an estimate.
Well, I mean, that would be a consideration of substitution, yes.
So, essentially, we'd already mentioned the pilings earlier, and again, these are all part of the, included within the 7.4 million dollars. We'd also anticipate a series of grade beams, which are concrete beams that support the floor, that are then supported by the pilings, and that's essentially, if you think of that as a bridge, that's how you bridge over a marginal soil that has a tendency to move around. The way pilings work is, the longer you make the piling, the more friction it has, the more it can hold up. So, generally speaking, it's just a question of how long and how close together do those piles need to be, which is also an estimate included in the report. And I would say that's roughly a $250,000 expenditure above what a typical shallow foundation system would be, that most of us are fairly familiar with.
And obviously, that being a one-story building versus a four, five-story, the way the building and the repetitive member value of the system would vary from the 250 to 500 or whatever.
So, that's one of the few things about this cost estimate, that gives me a lot of confidence that you could at least replace what is currently on site at the same site, is because a one-story building is very forgiving.
Yeah.
Multiple-story buildings, way more for each story, more possibility for movement, and the more critical it becomes to have very well-defined geotechnical information to make a recommendation for cost of the foundation system.
So, you, in your, for the way that the building, you would not do a monolithic map-type system, you would actually go with pilings and then...
And a series of grade beams with, the slab itself, in lieu of a four-inch slab, may end up being a six-inch slab, dependent upon the reinforcement that might need to be placed in there. So, I can only tell you this with some certainty, is because we've essentially done the same thing at Craven Community College for their business and technology building, which is a two-story building.
Yeah, I just, my, basically, my last comment is, is that I want to do whatever the citizens want to do, but I just want to make sure that they understand each option, and that they understand, you know, the validity of what you're saying. It's not directed towards you, I'm just in general, that they understand the possibilities of things that can happen in the past, and when you have a certain amount of money, and have the ability to build something bigger and better in the same area, that's going to still benefit them, I want them to know their options, because before, they didn't have, and now they do. So, that's just basically my main concern, and I just want to continue to make sure that we're on a process, that it's not going to be four to five years before this community center is built back, or built better in another location.
In putting all of these costs together, we did an analysis of potential things. Short of going out and doing test borings on the ground, the engineering firm took into certain, count certain variables that may be encountered, which is necessary to come up with what the estimated replacement cost would be, and those, as he said, have already been calculated into it. The, we have attempted, the majority of your funding is going to come from FEMA on this building, and we've attempted to structure that request for reimbursement of funding, to give you the maximum flexibility to do whatever that you would like with that final dollar value when it comes out, whether it comes out at 7.4, or seven, or six and a half, whatever it finally ends up at, you will have the, you'll hopefully have the flexibility to do whatever you would like with the money. If that means rebuilding back at Stanley White exactly the same, if it means building back a modified Stanley White to better serve the community and the needs that you want, if it involves moving it someplace else, or a combination thereof, those are all flexibility issues, and I would expect that once we find out a more firmer dollar value, that those would be the discussions that you'd probably have.
I think the seven million dollar question is, if that building was built in the '72 to '75 period, if and when the next big one comes, if it's 20 years from now, 30 years from now, and we spent $7 million there, or we spent $7 million in that 12-foot elevation area, as an architect, and you can't determine exactly, but obviously, the integrity would be compromised with, if you triple reinforce that system you're talking, with an inundation of five feet of water standing there for 24 hours, that system would be potentially compromised versus a comparable Stanley White somewhere that it did not have five feet of water on it. Would that be a reasonable statement?
Well, I believe so.
So, there's your seven million dollar question.
Well, the one thing that I like about, and hadn't even really thought of, is the fact that if we build it back in the same location and put it back with pilings, the city manager pointed out that it will be an island. I mean, it's going to, the rest of the community and the roadway and everything else is going to be under three or four foot of water, so we couldn't utilize it as a shelter. So, my recommendation, whether we put it in this current location, or whether we move it, I would recommend that the architect contact Red Cross and get what specifications they require for it to be a shelter, because there's very few buildings around here that can qualify as a shelter. So, and I do know that they have a list of specifications of what they require, so we might want to even start thinking about it, you know, and see what it's going to take if we build it back as a shelter. Even if we build it in the same location, it probably would be a good place to have a shelter.
It would be a recreation center, but you're saying the shelter would be the second component, correct?
Well, you have to build the building, I mean, shelters are schools now, so, you know, most of the, we had a shelter in the West New Bern Center, but it wasn't during the hurricane, it was after the hurricane, so you really don't have to have meet the specifications, storm specifications. What I'm saying is, if we're thinking about building a building back, it should meet the storm specifications, so the Red Cross can operate it as a shelter.
To put it a different way, there's a reason why, if the schools are being used, and our recreation centers are being used as shelters, there's a reason why J.T. Barber, Oaks Road, and Stanley White Recreation Center aren't used as shelters.
That's right.
Okay.
Yep.
Which kind of gets to the heart of the matter, that I don't think, for the welfare of our citizens, if this thing had not been a 10 and a half foot storm surge and a category one, and had been a three-foot storm surge and category four, unless you had about a 200 mile an hour wind zone, you could have had a lot of residents, their life would be in extreme jeopardy.
Absolutely.
If they were inside that unit, and it went from what we thought was a one, and went to a four, which we thought it was going to be a three or a four, so...
Hence the reason why we, mandatory evacuation to like Raleigh and places like that.
For hurricane purposes, what do, what is to recommend? Is it about 200 mile an hour? I'm not up on that, so...
Well...
Obviously, 140 would be probably the wind load in that area, but hurricane resiliency is probably 200 or something?
There are multiple standards, simply from a building code point of view, which is what I'm most familiar, and the place that I would suggest we start, I think you're looking at a type three risk factor building, which essentially has a robust enhanced structure, and that is a different way of saying that it's got a better capacity to resist a higher wind load.
Right.
At some point, you face a challenge if you want to design for a category four or five storm, because essentially, you know, you're building the equivalent of a bomb shelter, as opposed to a recreation center, and those are opposing uses, so we have to find a happy balance between...
Well, I don't think as a city, we're going to want the citizens to, even if we have 300 mile an hour wind load, we want west of I-95, we want a mandatory evacuation.
That's right.
And we don't want them sitting around in a two or 300 mile per hour wind.
Sure. But to achieve those higher wind level resistance ratings, you essentially have to eliminate openings, windows and doors.
Well, also overhangs.
And overhangs.
Overhangs.
Right, so I don't want to compromise the beauty and the enhancements of the building if we focus so, you know, on a bomb shelter or a regular shelter, I mean it...
And I just share that as a silly response to a large storm.
No, I'm just saying that, because I'm just conversing with the board to say, you know, we want Stanley White to be a recreation center, I mean, I understand we want to be able to have shelter, especially in that community, but I just don't want it to look like...
Well, you know, and we're way too early and way too ahead, but you don't have to build the whole building like that.
Yeah.
You can build the gymnasium or something like that to accommodate those type of things, but we're still, this is, this discussion can take place a little later on, when we start doing a design and discussion.
Well, in other words, are we anticipating about three to six months here and back? We're not here back two weeks, I wouldn't think.
It won't be two weeks.
Is this the time for us to start calling our people?
Well, I'm on crystal ball about three to six months.
I was actually going to bring that up and say, I don't have my crystal ball with me here today, but the state of North Carolina is very aggressive here in working with FEMA to try to push these things through. Alderman Astor there has been in contact with them quite regularly about moving the projects forward, and we're hoping that the timeframe will be shorter than six months, and we plan on staying on top of it to try to push it forward.
Okay. I think as a board, when we get that magic number, I'm sure time will be of the essence to move forward with an improvement somewhere, if it'd be there. But I know that the board, I think I speak for the board, that we want the permanent name to remain Stanley White.
Absolutely.
The Stanley White Recreation Center, and I'm going to say Stanley White.
Is there anything else on the Stanley Center, Corey, that, any other progress or anything, anything else you need to talk to us about, about the Stanley Center?
No, other than that, all the paperwork has been submitted, and they're reviewing it, I guess, would be the appropriate, right?
Awesome.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
For the presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Trip.
It's time, Mr. Stevens, let's go to number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is consideration of the board adopting ordinance amending, ordinance amendment changing the city's election method from nonpartisan with runoff to a nonpartisan plurality method. As you recall, the 14th of May, 2019, meeting, a public hearing was held to receive comments on an ordinance amendment to change the city's election method from nonpartisan with runoff to a nonpartisan plurality method, beginning with an election to be held in November of 2021. Now that the hearing has been conducted, the matter is before the board to consider an actual ordinance amendment to change the election method. Those ordinance is attached, Mr. Davis has drafted that up, and we can answer any questions the board may have. Once again, upon adoption of this, it needs to go to the state for their consideration, most likely at the next, actually, the charter chain.
No, it doesn't go to the state.
Go ahead.
It just gets filed with the state.
Yeah, filed with the state.
Mr. Davis, my first question to you is, if we delayed the vote on this this evening, by law, we have, what, 60 days to adopt it from the public hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, it could essentially, if we...
It could roll, it could.
It could roll.
Yeah, just to make you aware, for the benefit of the citizens, in the first resolution that the board adopted, we anticipated a public hearing on May 14th and an adoption tonight, or a consideration tonight on the 28th. The law just gives us 60 days, but we do have a resolution out there from a month ago that verbalized an expectation that it would be considered tonight. I just share that with you more as I... I just share that with you, more as a political issue than a legal issue.
I also want to make the comment that in, in talks that, you know, we, we looked at the even year process, and I was totally not in favor of the presidential year, even year, because I just felt it would diminish us as a community, and, you know, it's so partisan that I didn't feel that was in the best interest of our citizens and what they deserve from their, their leaders going forward. I am firmly resolved, though, that we should have a November election with no runoff. I'm total agreement. Now, whether it's an even year, odd year, I can acquiesce to having it in an odd year, because I understand it's a great savings, but we have to get to that point, and that's the problem. No matter what we do, if we change to an even year, we'd have to get to that point. And that would require a state change, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, in that case, we have a one-year term to get to an even year or a five-year term after twenty-one, and I would think it would be not beneficial to our citizens or to staff or to anybody running for office to run for a one-year term, because it's expensive and it's just your time, I mean, you get in office and then it's time to run again. I think that would be almost suicidal, to be honest with you, but, you know, a five-year term for people that would want to do that, but at least it's announced in advance and it goes. So, I think.
That's technically a waste of money, too. If you do one year, you have to do the election that we're already paying for, and then get on an even year, we're paying for another election, even though it's split with other people.
No, you would have the election in five years. Instead of four years, you'd have the election in five years.
Right, but I'm saying if we decided to do one year to get to.
Yeah, yeah, one year, I think is not doable. I don't think that's reasonable. I mean, that's my opinion. I don't think that's reasonable. But a five-year, then, then you would have the benefit of the cheaper savings, whatever. I'm just going to make my.
So, twenty twenty-one, if we agree, it would be, if we agreed hypothetically for twenty twenty-one to, where, if it was changed to get to even year, when we run in twenty twenty-one, or whoever runs in twenty twenty-one, if they're elected, they're sitting here for five years?
Correct, but this is the process right now. What's before us is to change our election process from an October majority election to a November plurality. That's what's before us right now in twenty twenty-one, when our terms are up. We have four years' term, so that's what's before us right now. We can vote that in and move forward with that, and then we could come back in the next couple of months and say, now we want to change our elections to twenty twenty-five, or, wait, excuse me, twenty twenty-six, in an even year, and let the term in twenty-one be a five-year term. That has to go to the state. So, that wouldn't happen until next year. You'd have to bring it before the state. They would have to introduce a local bill, and it would have to move forward. Am I correct in what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
But that would only be temporarily, the five years, because then it would be.
Yeah, it would be one time, a five-year term.
And then we're back, then the people are back on four-year terms.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
And also, just as a point, a point of interest, I have spoken to Trent Woods, and Trent Woods has already filed a bill to go to even years, but they'll go in twenty-two, because they're going to go ahead and change their system up. So, they're going to go in twenty, I believe in twenty-two, they're going to go ahead to the even year and change theirs. I don't know if River Bend is going to do that, so that could impact us in an even, in an odd year in our costs. So, lots, there's lots of moving, moving parts. But I want to make sure everybody understands what's before us, what's in front of us going forward, and what's happening in our surrounding community, and I've said enough.
Alderman Bingle, I think you hit kind of the nail on the head. We've had some discussion over the last few days about this. There's a lot of moving parts. At this point, I make a motion that we table this to a future date, so we can allow time for the board to discuss amongst themselves and come up with the best decision. If we're going to change, I said, from the very first night this was presented, then I feel like if we're going to go through this process, it should be on an even year. I'm not, I'm not hung up on whether it's presidential or another even year, but just as you mentioned with Trent Woods already filing, that's one other party now that is going to be out of this equation for us to split the cost of our election. So, if River Bend or someone else went along with it, it's just going to further increase our costs, whereas we would avert all of that if we moved to an even year. So, I move to take one.
Why can't we vote on what we already have?
And I, I'm somewhat okay with that. The only thing I'm, I still want to go to a November election, because at the end of the day, if we go to October and November, even an even year, we're going to be paying more money, because everybody else is going to be going to the plurality method. So, if that's going to be the case, we still have to get to twenty-one. That's the key here right now. We have to get to twenty-one, and if we go ahead and change our method to the November election in twenty-one, we can still change to the even year. So, people are going to know in twenty-one, they're electing people for five years, and we can potentially, because regardless, I would be in favor, even if we started the process to go to the, to the even years, I still want a November election. I don't see us having an October and a November election, but I'll leave it to my colleagues to voice their opinion.
Just to add one more point that might, might be helpful. On the legal side, the statute requires that, that you have at least ninety days prior to the election before you can change it. That's the legal side. On the practical side, it's just a question of how early do you want to do it so folks that want to run for office in twenty twenty-one have time to prepare and know the rules of engagement, which is a long way of saying you do have time. This is not, this is a quite simple process to start over in three months or six months if you want to spend more time reflecting on it. Right.
So, it wouldn't, so say we came back at our next meeting, which is June the eleventh, and decided to vote on it. That in-between, we spoke and could not find a resolution.
Yeah, you've got sixty days.
So, it doesn't hurt anything.
Yeah, you've got sixty days.
This doesn't go away.
This doesn't go away. After sixty days, it goes away.
Okay.
But restarting it is, is quite simple. We just went through it. It's not, not that big a deal. If you, if you weren't certain about what to do, I, I don't think I would do this, I would adopt this tonight as a Band-Aid with thoughts of changing it later. That's going to look peculiar that we made a decision, never got to election, and then changed our election methodology yet again. I don't think I would do that.
My, my only comment would be is how much are we going to talk about it? It's, I mean, we need to figure out what we're trying to do or what the end game is, because we just beating a dead horse. If we want to move it, because ultimately, we're saving taxpayer dollars, I mean, I do like the suggestion that, you know, if this is something that's very serious, why are we the ones making the decision? Why don't we put it on the ballot and let the citizens vote on whether they want it changed or not? I mean, the whole point is voting. I mean, why, I mean, we're putting it up for us in the benefit of the next board, whether we run or not. If we really care about the citizens, let them make the decision on whether they want to change or not on a twenty, you know, twenty twenty, one year, whatever they want to do. I just feel like if we're having so, so many issues to try and come together on it, then we don't need to do nothing at all.
I'm just curious, what does it take to put something on the ballot? Curious.
Well, this, this statute has a mechanism to have a referendum, but it only gives you the odd-year flavors.
Can't do it for an even year.
Anything on an even year would just be, I have to call the Board of Elections and fair, what a referendum costs.
So, the state would do that. The state makes that, the legislature makes the decision, if we change it to an even year, that's a decision by the legislature. We just send up a resolution.
Yeah, you would send up, hopefully, a unanimous resolution saying, we would like this for these reasons. You give your local delegation and explain to them your thinking, and if they're in agreement, I, I've never seen a local bill not pass when you have unanimous agreement with the requesting board and your local delegation is unanimous. I've not had one of those in thirty years that didn't pass.
Okay, we do have a motion. Second, is there any further discussion? Seeing now on paper? Yes.
Alderman Bingle, do you have any comments? I'm just, because I know you're thoughtful about things like this.
Attorney Davis, as it states right now tonight, what we hear is trying to approve this resolution here to move this to a November election, which will.
With no runoff.
If we vote on this tonight, it's going to move this to a November election, no runoff, and it's going to potentially save taxpayers' dollars.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, then, we can come right back, again, within the thirty-day process before you say the sixty days is up, if, since we're having some conflict here about the move into a even year.
Good question. No, ma'am. Whatever, if you adopt this ordinance tonight, you've amended the charter, and it's done. You can start the process over again, adopt a new resolution, have a new public hearing, and be back in this night again in the future. I would recommend against that, because you're amending your charter twice on an election that you haven't even had, and that strikes me as a lot of work.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
So, tabling this buys you time if you want to think about it, and you've got another two meetings, at least two more meetings to address this if you still want to, while the legal window is open to adopt the ordinance that you have.
As is, not to change it.
As is tonight. We have another month.
Well, Alderman Bingle, this, I mean, this was something you were very adamant about, so I think this, you know, decision that.
Yeah, I, I am still adamant about, I want to know, I do want a November plurality, because the whole, the majority of the state of North Carolina votes in that method, but I am not opposed to an even year as long as it's not an election year, as we had discussed earlier. So, if it's easier to put all this together in one thing by delaying it for one meeting and maybe trying to iron it out for a few more things, then I'm willing to wait a meeting to do that, but still have the option to come in here and do this if we decide we can't agree on that.
It wouldn't be like that. We would have to start the process over again, because we're changing the terms of what you already drew up and what we had a public hearing on. So, regardless, right, we have to do this all over again.
Well, it's kind of a little different, because we're going to go to the state on that.
If you go to the state, it's a different process, but you do have time between now and the twenty twenty-one election. You have time to try everything. You can, next fall, if you want to consider going to the even years, we can, we can adopt a resolution, give local delegation, they can meet a next-year session, and if that passes, you've done it. If it doesn't pass, or you change your mind, you still have another year to go back to this method. So, you've got time. There's, there should not be a huge sense of urgency to get this done tonight.
So, there's no consequences for, if we just don't do anything else?
You can punt. You can totally punt on this whole issue tonight, next month, and then start it back up again in the future.
I'll call a questioning, because I agree with you.
Question's been called.
Okay, so the motion on the floor, just to be clear, the motion on the floor is to table, to table this item until a later date, but in the meantime, have discussion amongst ourselves of, of other options. Is that correct? Is that correct, Alderman Bingle? Okay, I just want to make sure I know what I'm proposing on.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. You didn't want a roll call.
That's fine.
Okay.
Let's go to item number nine, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number nine is consideration of the board to adopt a resolution approving the two thousand nineteen street resurfacing contract. After seeking bids, six qualified bids were received for the two thousand nineteen street resurfacing contract. Tripp Brothers Incorporated submitted the lowest bid at nine hundred eighty-nine thousand four hundred fifty dollars. It is requested that the board consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with this vendor, including all change orders that are within the budgeted amount. The project is scheduled to begin work in the next thirty to forty-five days, and Mr. Montane has provided a memo in your packet and a list of streets that are going to be resurfaced as part of this project. We're happy to entertain any questions the board has.
The only question I would have is, I would assume in the bid process, you made them aware, is this full milling or just the sides, the curbs? I mean, is there an understandable misunderstanding about the surface prep for the street resurfacing?
All right, Mr. Montane, come up and address that question, sir.
I wasn't particularly satisfied with Oaks Road myself, but anyway, I just want to make sure we're getting proper surface prep, milling.
Certainly. We, we've actually talked to the contractor several times about this. I think it kind of depends, varies by street. Some of the streets that have some more, more patchwork, such as Spencer Avenue, will be full milled, and then there's some streets that doesn't have as much, there'll actually be some edge milling, which is typically what we've done in the past. So, it'd kind of be a combination of full milling and edge milling.
I noted if I were bidding, which I'm not in this business, particularly Spencer Avenue to get the proper grade, you're going to have a little overzealous amount of milling needed to be done to get the inverted needs met for the drainage. Is this particular bidder any other ones aware of some of the site creps going to be needed?
We did, matter of fact, David Tinnan, who's our utility construction inspector, who did all the work on Spencer Avenue and Park Avenue, actually worked with us to draw up some specific scope for this project for drainage purposes, for grading purposes on Park and Spencer. So, that has all been made well aware to the contractor.
I know, Alderman Bingle, you have a lot of concern about, I mean, we're going to be very disappointed if Spencer Avenue gets, it gets surfaced and some of those issues are not milled out properly.
We certainly understand that, and the contractor's well aware.
We do understand that. We've had a lot of those issues downtown, so I think they're aware of it. Matt, the Tripp Brothers, have the city used this contracting?
Oh, yeah, we've used.
Because it's cheap as, I mean, I mean, have you used them before?
No, I think you're correct. They, they are the low bidder, but they are a contractor. We have certainly used in the past. They did a section of North Creighton Street last year when there was utility work done. They also are the contractor that reserve, or excuse me, that paved the new water resources facility, and they also paved the new city garage. That's just a couple of projects there, but we have used them in the past, yes.
I, I just want to reiterate on something the statement the mayor just said. He said he wasn't quite happy with the Oaks Road. So, the Oaks Road project is complete?
The Oaks Road project is complete, and I know there's been some talk about some of the seams or some of the joints when they started and stopped. One of the things that we're going to require as far as this project is, when they start a street or they start a block, they do the entire section at one time. They're not going to be allowed to stop in the middle and come back the next day they complete. Once they start a block, they've got to do that entire block or that entire street all at one time.
Okay. Good.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the two thousand nineteen street resurfacing contract.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing now, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Des?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Allo?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number ten, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board, item number ten is request the board to consider adopting a resolution approving an audit contract for fiscal year ending June thirty, two thousand nineteen. Request for proposal was advertised for services to perform the city's annual audit. Five proposals were received and scored based on cost, qualifications, and experience, with more emphasis placed on the latter two factors. Malden and Jenkins LLC received the highest score and is the recommended vendor. Their proposed cost to perform the audit for fiscal year ending FY nineteen is forty thousand dollars. The proposed proposal fee is inclusive of one major program. Each additional major program is at a cost of five thousand each. As you recall, that's kind of for special different required audit for certain things we have that are required additional work by them. Most of the time, they're like federal programs.
I was going to say, could you explain? I was confused about that.
Yeah, it's like federal programs, like we had one just recently, what was it, a grant that we had?
Yeah, the VDA grant is going, is going to be a major program. It's anything, basically a single audit is a special audit that with additional procedures that have to be done to ensure compliance with grants. Any, if we spend more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal, in federal money, we're required to have this additional audit. A major program is anything, anything that is, any individual grant that's over five hundred thousand dollars. So, the grant being one point three million dollars would be one.
So, for every, now, any of this FEMA money coming or whatever, is that going to require special auditing?
I believe so. We're double checking on that, though, just.
Because then, that, in that case, is it just one FEMA audit at five thousand, or we're going to have to break it down, because that could really be a lot of money.
It should be one, but we're, again, we're going to have to follow up on that particular Should be one, but we're, again, we're going to have to follow up on that particular piece.
So we're just approving, I mean, would everybody be like this? Every financial institution that we got to audit us?
Each, each one of these, each one of these was different, had different pieces associated with it. Some of them had, had a couple of them built in, some additional fees for each major program after. Some of them didn't specify anything.
Concerned. We could spend another $40,000 based on what we're doing.
I think FEMA audits themselves. I think, isn't that right, JR?
That's, that's, like I said, that's one I got to double check.
And I think FEMA, well, this will get to their auditors. I'm going to do a lot of that during closeouts.
Alderman Odom.
Mr. Sabatelli, who's our current auditor and has been for the last couple of years?
It's Malden and Jenkins, the same, this is the same one.
So it's the same company?
Yes, sir.
And I assume that all of these that bid, they went through a process that you or your team evaluated, but they all would meet the criteria of, I mean, they've got to be authorized or approved by North Carolina.
Yeah, yeah, they submitted documentation, they submitted the requirements, and basically we scored based on the proposals that were provided, provided to us. And we scored them based on, based on a review of the information that they gave us.
Could you share with us, and I hate to put you on the spot, but share with us what that criteria was?
Give you some of that information, yes, sir.
Because I'm looking at the, just while you're doing that, looking at the proposed hours. So Thompson, Price, Scott, and Adams proposed 380 hours, which is more than our current auditor. But they're considerably less. So I was just curious in what the criteria was that you used to evaluate them.
Yes, sir. The hours was one of the things we evaluated on. We felt that, that the hours provided by Malden and Jenkins was more accurate as to what we would be, as to what we would be saying.
But they, but they proposed more hours. That's the reason I'm confused. So their per hour rate would be less.
What page is this?
So that, every, each one of these had provided us a...
Ninety-two.
Each one of these, each one of these provided us with a cost summary. And that cost, and some of them provided discounts, some of them didn't. Each firm has their own pricing based on their, based on their knowledge, experience, and what they feel is appropriate for the charge per hour.
How long has Malden and Jenkins done ours?
They've done ours for the last three years.
I'm just personally, I'm of the opinion, I think it's good to have a change. I think three years is a good time to make that change. Not knowing exactly what the criteria was that you used to determine the scores is sort of hard for us to say. But if all these firms are authorized and approved to conduct them, let's be honest, these audits are, they're pretty straightforward. Everybody knows what they have to do. They're not digging deep into our financials. I remember when Malden and Jenkins did ours for the first couple of years, they found some things that previous auditors had not. So I, I don't know why we wouldn't go with Thompson, Price, Scott, and Adams. I don't even, I don't even know them from Adams. Pun intended.
Was that the hundred and five?
Yes, sir.
Part of the decision, as I recall, earlier, three years earlier, was this group was from out of state. And our concern a little bit was that they were not as knowledgeable about North Carolina accounting principles. But we, the price was the reason, I thought we went with them versus some others at that time.
No, sir. While price plays a factor in the consideration of selecting an auditor, it's very much like selecting an engineering firm or selecting, selecting an architect. You don't necessarily go by price. You go by the, you go by the responses provided in the, provided in the RFP. We're, just real quickly here, we're looking at things like relevant educational background of each individual assigned to the proposed audit, senior level and higher. Professional experience of assigned individuals in auditing relative government, or relatively relevant government organizations, programs, activities, or functions. Let's see here. Describe the firm's statement of policy and procedures regarding independence under, under government accounting, government auditing standards, yellow book, July 11 revision. Describing regulatory action, which none of had anything related to that. It's profiled information. Type of audit programs used, use of statistical sampling, use of computer audit specialists, so on and so forth. There's, there are a number of criteria that we go through. Total of, there's twenty, there's 21 criteria that we score each of these, each of these individuals on. And price, while price being is one of them, is not the sole factor we, we select or we recommend based on. So we just go, we go through and we score, and this is how the scores fell out.
Just, you know, it's a $5,000 increase for them every year. So by, in year three, we're paying them $50,000, plus the five, plus the five, plus the five, whatever we have programs on.
Yes, ma'am.
And the other people, Thompson, Price, you know, they're flat at 34.5 every year. So they're saying, hey, we're flat. This is what we're going to do it at. I would think that would get more points.
And what's the harm in trying them this year? And if they don't work out too well, we can try some of those next year?
You're talking about Thompson, Price?
Yeah. I mean, for the three years.
You have to sign a three-year contract?
It's, well, it's a three, it's a three-year contract.
So we try them for three years?
We could conceivably move on after the first year if we, if we could conceivably.
Mr. Sabatelli?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you pleased with Malden and Jenkins?
Yeah.
Have you been pleased with them over the last three years?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, we've had, I mean, we've had some discussions back and forth, but, you know, overall, they've done, they've done an okay job for us.
Just okay? Have you seen that commercial, "Just Okay"? So I'm asking you, is it just okay? Or is it a good job?
They've done a, they've done an overall good job for us.
So what were their fees on that last? $31,500 that could go into the general fund and go towards Stanley Way, Kidsville.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there?
Yeah, the fee for the current year was $36,000.
Excuse me?
$36,000 was for the FY18 fiscal year.
Okay, so they've gone up to 40 plus to five for each additional program?
Yes, ma'am. The reason we, part of the reason we bided out was because there was a fee increase proposed by them that was even greater than what they provided here.
Do they each provide references?
Yes, ma'am. Each one of them does provide references, but we, as we reviewed it, and we felt that this was the best firm.
Mr. Sabatelli?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Did you review the references or contact references from this Thomas, Price, Scott, and Adams?
We reviewed to make sure that they did provide references, but we did not, we did not actually call those individual references. Because of, because of the scoring difference and whatnot, there was not a, the difference would not have made it.
Is there a deadline to get this done? Can we table this till the next meeting? So you could do this research and maybe answer some of these questions?
If that's, if that's towards desire, I'm happy to do so.
Just one, one question. Did I understand you correctly to say that you put this out for bid? Because they, they gave us a projected price that was more than what they ended up bidding?
Right.
Yeah.
I would be in favor of selecting someone other than them or table if you want to have some more discussion.
I'm in favor of selecting somebody other than them as well. I mean, they got three years, they raised the price, this other company is cheaper. And I think we need to, do I need to make a motion? What's, what does the rest of the board think?
Why don't we ask you to table it and then even contact the references?
Well, we should have asked three years ago when we first got them.
No, the references for the...
The reference for the other company.
Cheaper guy.
Oh, okay. He just talked about Thomas. Okay, okay. I thought you were talking about the same company.
No, 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 no. Because the, this other ones, they're cheaper, but we need to check the references.
Okay.
Was that your motion? Kind of made a motion.
You want me to make a motion?
I thought you made one.
I make a motion that we award the contract to Thompson, Price, Scott, and Adams.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I, I would like to, before, I can't vote yes without checking their references. I feel like I need to make sure that they have worked in the state of North Carolina, that they can, they're familiar with North Carolina practices, best practices. And if I have that, then I'll, I would totally vote to give it to them. But I just want to make sure, so I would prefer to table it.
My comment would be is when we get this information presented to us and these scores and this money and the total hours, what is the due diligence that's done before by said individual, Mr. JR, of already looking up the references before you presented to us for the hypothetical possibility that we no longer want to go with the current one and we want to go with somewhere else, already had that stuff done?
Yes, ma'am. That's a lesson learned I'll take with me. Like I said, we looked at the scores and we felt that there was, that we felt there was no need based on the scoring, so we...
Yeah, but you need to leave that up to us.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
I, I concur with Alderman Bingle. I think we need some additional information on this new company. I may for the references is concerned.
Okay. So we, we have a second on this motion, so we have to act on it. We can't make an alternate motion. We have to act on that. Is that correct?
Well, we have a motion by Alderman Odom, which was signed by Alderman Kinsey. Is there any other discussion? Let's have a roll call.
You don't think that we should just wait and check the references first?
I meant, if they've got criteria they have to meet for the, whoever the governing agency is oversees us, they're authorized to perform audits in the state of North Carolina, or they wouldn't be on the list, I would hope.
Right.
I think that would be a different discussion we would have. So, I meant, we, we did the same thing with, I thought we did the same thing with Malden and Jenkins three years ago. The previous auditor we had came in with a higher price to put out for bid. They came in, they were new to the state, but yet they were authorized to conduct audits. And from, from my experience with these audits, like I said, it's, it's pretty straightforward in what they do. So I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
I agree. And we're saving the taxpayers' money, $31,000.
But they are approved by the state of North Carolina. That's why I want to know. They are approved by the state of North Carolina.
They do other audits within the state of North Carolina, yes, ma'am. They should be there for you.
So a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Gee, thanks.
Hey, that's right. I got it ready.
Hey, but I won't say it's just okay.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 11, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board. Item number 11 is consideration of the board to adopt an ordinance to establish the City Hall Elevator Project Fund. As you recall, at our May 14, 2019 meeting, the board provided directions to staff to establish a project fund for the City Hall Elevator Project. Proposed ordinance establishes the project fund with an initial budget of $1 million that will be funded through proceeds from borrowing. There's an item that will come up later on that with our intent to reimburse like we typically do. There's memos included in your packet from Mr. Sabatelli, and we'll answer any questions.
Any questions of the board?
No, just finally, maybe we're almost, we're getting there. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt an ordinance to establish the City Hall Elevator Project Fund because Mr. Hobbins is sitting here, and I want to make sure he hears it.
Second, yes.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? See, and I must have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 12, Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the board. As I mentioned, this item is a consideration of the board to adopt a resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse the City Hall Elevator Project Fund. Its resolution is needed anytime that we're doing pursuant to projects that require improvements. As pursuant also to IRS regulations, a declaration of intent is needed and must be adopted prior to or within 60 days of payment of the project expenditures that are to be reimbursed. Memos included in your packet.
Does the board have questions?
No, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution approving a declaration of intent to reimburse the City Hall Elevator Project Fund.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? See, and I must have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 13.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13 is consideration of the board to adopt a resolution approving the classification pay, pay plan for fiscal year 1920. As we do each and every year when we adopt, prior to adopting the budget, the board adopts a classification pay plan. This pay, pay plan, sorry, took a twister, was adopted as part of the annual budget ordinances. And after conferring with the attorney-in-law, it is determined that the pay plan should be adopted in a format of a resolution and separate from the budget ordinance. So last year was the first year that we did it separately. We're continuing that method this year. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does the board have questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion with adopt a resolution approving the classification pay plan for fiscal year 29, 2019, 20.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there discussion? See, and I must have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 14.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 14 is consideration of the board to adopt an ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges. As part of the budget process, the board annually adopts the amended schedule of fees and charges, in part to identify in one place all of the fees and charges that the city charges to its customers and those in and out of the city. The fees identified in the schedule are included in the revenue projections for the fiscal year 1920 budget and will be effective on July 1, 2019. There's a memo that's included in your packet that identifies the sections of the schedule and the changes therein. And a red light version is also included that shows you and reflects those changes. Happy to answer any questions.
Does the board have questions?
I don't know how we stay straight with all this many fees and stuff. Is there any way to simple, I mean, this is like 101. There's so many, almost like each department needs a booklet, but it's really difficult to keep up with all the different fees and things we charge.
Yes, ma'am. You got to have it.
I understand, but goodness gracious. I just wish there was an easier way.
I don't make a motion.
I make a motion that we consider adopting amendment of schedule fees and charges for the parks and rest.
For the ancillary.
Alderman Kinsey, I think it's for all. It's not just parks and rest. It's all fees.
For all.
Second.
I didn't want to put words in your mouth, but I just want to make sure. Mayor, did you understand the motion?
I do.
Would you read that back?
To adopt the ordinance amending the schedule of fees and charges for next fiscal year, effective July 1st.
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion? Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Orderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number 15.
Thank you, members of the, Mayor and members of the board. Following the last two items that you approved, item number 15 is consideration of the board to adopt a budget ordinance for fiscal year 1920. After presentation review of the manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 1920, we also held a budget workshop and conducted a public hearing. Changes were expressed by the board have been incorporated into the final budget ordinance for fiscal year 1920. And it is before you tonight to be adopted for next year, beginning July 1 of 2019. Mr. Sabatelli has included a memo in your packet that outlines those changes, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Does the board have questions?
Mayor, just a comment. I wanted to thank staff once again for their work and effort behind this budget. But I wanted to make a comment that I think this budget cycle and with the storm event actually proves how important growth is to our city. We are in a much better financial position than our counterparts on the county with the loss. Now, granted, what growth takes place in the city also takes place in the county. However, they had a lot of loss in areas such as River Bend and Fairfield Harbor that we did not experience. So, you know, it's very important for us to continue to keep our eye on the ball of growth and economic development within our city because it helps offset the tax valuation that we did lose within our city limits by way of the storm. So, thank you.
I want to just follow up by saying, the process was much better, too, this year. And I want to thank aggravated the city manager to change things up at our retreat and really let staff come and talk to us at that point. He gave it a chance to sink in and for us to make our comments and everything, which made the workshop process, you know, we could beat them up during, during that process. And made the workshop process, you know, to do it in one day like that was pretty incredible in one afternoon. And as you see, we had very, very few changes. So thank you for letting us change that process and do things in a different manner. I think it was more efficient.
And thank you again, Mark. Even though we haven't received all our money back from FEMA, we still have been able to function and function well and pay the bills and continue to operate the city. to operate the city. And thank you and the staff again for such great operation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. City Manager. And we always forget to thank our city clerk. Thank you as well. You have made your part in all this, and I really do appreciate it. And like you said, Sabrina, that, that department head workshop was a blessing because we really covered a lot of territory in that one day, and it helped eliminate the timeframe that we would've been using within a two-day process for the budget. So, thank y'all, you and staff.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt.
Pardon?
I was saying, thank you.
I make a motion that we adopt the budget ordinance for the FY two thousand nineteen twenty budget.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there further discussion? Seeing, I must have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries.
My people are making a comment. This is the earliest budget.
Yes.
In all the years that I've ever been involved with the city, the city budget, May twenty-eighth to adopt the budget, so you know.
And wait, and we didn't need a pillow this year either.
Just to clarify, you said that you've been a part, okay.
Yeah, but you were asleep when you were doing that budget.
All right.
Praise the Lord, yes, thank you. Item sixteen.
Item number sixteen.
Thank you. And by the way, JR, me some kudos too for his, he did a fantastic job. And it's very beneficial for staff to have the budget adopted and completed at this time because now it does take time to input all this stuff into our new system. So, thank you very much for your work as well. I'll give y'all a slow clap as well, so thank you. Item number sixteen is consideration of the board to adopt a resolution to approve the two thousand eighteen local water supply plan. North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three fifty-five, section one, requires each unit of government provide public waters, that provides public water service to annually prepare and submit a local water supply plan to the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for review and approval prior to the first of April. North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality has recently completed its review of the information contained in the city of New Bern's two thousand eighteen plan and has indicated that the plan is complete and contains all the information needed to satisfy the statutory requirements. Final step of the compliance is adoption by the governing board. Mr. Hughes has included a memo in your packet. We're happy to answer any questions.
Does the board have questions?
Mayor, I might make a motion that the board adopt a resolution to approve the twenty eighteen local water supply plan.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing, I must have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number seventeen. We'll start with appointments with Alderman Bingle.
I do not have an appointment at this time, but would like to make a comment. Both the mayor and I have had appointments for the New Bern Parents Commission for a while now, and we are finding it difficult at best. I've been talking to Mr. Hughes, the Parks and Rec, and this board comes under it. You know, I think a couple of years ago, we reduced the size because we couldn't find anybody, and we went from maybe, what, nine to seven? Now, we're having a difficult time. I think maybe we need to have some talk or discussion about the board, people serving on it, maybe folding it into something else, or just maybe talk about it. You know, I just think we might need to have some discussion going forward so that we could.
Do you want to have an ad hoc?
Maybe either, you know, open it up. It could be people that are not, that live in the city of New Bern or whatever it takes, but we're not finding the people that we need to come up to the board. So, I'm just wondering if we should have some discussion.
Do you want to get three Alderman and meet with possibly?
Whatever. You look like you want to say something.
Yeah, I also want to ask, didn't we reduce it to five, and then we figured out had to go back to seven legally?
I believe, I believe that's the case, yeah. I'd have to check the statute about whether it has to be in city or not. I just don't recall.
Yeah, so that may be the only thing. We want to look at that and make sure, you know, if you have these commissions and can't find people to serve on it, at some point, they're, you know, they're gonna.
All right. You have any appointments tonight?
Yes, sir.
Alderman Harris?
I'm still looking for someone to fill planning and zoning boards, so please send me your resumes. I'm gonna be dropping off to Ms. Brenda. She'll get them to me, but I'm looking for someone to appoint because Carol Williams has a second term and she can no longer be reappointed.
Okay.
Alderman Astor?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to reappoint Jim Bisbee for, to the HPC.
Second.
Motion and second. Is there discussion? Seeing, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Anything else? Alderman Kinsey?
Not tonight.
Alderman Best?
Not today.
Alderman Odom?
Yes, sir.
Okay, this time we have the attorney's report.
Nothing for tonight, Mayor.
The city manager's report.
Several items, Mayor, if you don't mind. I have received several emails and comments from the board regarding permanent placement of some items here in City Hall. As you will notice, we have former mayor Leander Morgan that was placed there specifically during the time that we had the North Carolina Supreme Court here because Justice Morgan actually sat in his best seat during that process, and we thought it appropriate to have his picture hanging up above him. So, I thought that was a very moving, and you would not believe the, the look on his face when he came in. And obviously, I can't tell you how many pictures he took in front of it. So, one of the other comments was made about, since mayor, former mayor Morgan was the first African American for the city of New Bern, it was also noted that Ms. Bingle, Alderman Bingle's mother-in-law, was also the first female mayor of the city of New Bern. And it was also asked that maybe her picture be hung on the opposing wall over here. So, I've kind of heard from members of the board, and it seems that there's kind of a majority that everybody was in agreement with that. So, we're going to go ahead and move forward with that. And if the board so chooses, if y'all want to take a formal vote, that's fine, but I've kind of got enough, I think, formal discussion amongst the board to kind of move forward with that if that's the board's pleasing.
Well, it's the board's pleasure.
I just want Alderman Bingle, is that fine with your family? It is, but I do want, I do want to recuse myself from any vote or anything like that because it is my mother-in-law. But yes, I have asked my sister-in-laws, and they, they would be proud to have her.
Would somebody like to make a motion to recuse Alderman Bingle from that discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to recuse Alderman Bingle from the discussion of hanging her mother-in-law's picture.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries.
Do we need to have a motion to have it hung, or we're okay?
Or just direction?
Just direction.
Yes.
You want direction?
It's up to the board. Like I said, I feel confident that there's enough direction from the board of the people that I've heard from. With that being the case, looking at the significance of having that picture there, that the other first should also be there. So, if your board wants to give me formal direction in a formal meeting, that's fine, but I've kind of feel comfortable where you are at it.
Go on.
Okay, it was probably redundant to do the recusal, but at the same time, could I ask for a show of hands? This is not a formal vote. Are those that would be in favor giving the direction? That's not a formal vote if that, am I compliant, sir?
That's fine.
Okay. Okay. Anything else under city manager's report?
Yes, sir. I have several items. I know in the past, Alderman Best had brought up some points about staff and some of the excessive heat conditions and working in those. So, I just want to let you know that we are keeping abreast of that and that it is a hot week, and we have sent out some information regarding that to staff from our HR department today for our department heads and staff members to keep in mind. It's not the highest level of, the two highest levels, I guess, yet, but it's at the moderate level, which is still something we need to keep an eye on and make sure our staff are taken care of.
Excuse me, Mr. City Manager.
Yes.
Do you have a microphone in my house?
No.
You chewed.
I do not.
Because I was discussing that today with my husband.
Okay.
And then you brought it up tonight. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want our employees to know that we do, we are concerned about their, their welfare and that we are compassionate and we care. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Finally, I think the staff had promised a, I know I'd shared with y'all some of the findings regarding our inspection at Craven Terrace. So, I think we had promised during formal meeting to kind of provide some, you know, a report along with a little bit of a presentation regarding the inspection that was performed at Craven Terrace. So, at this point, I'm going to ask Mr. Ruggieri and his staff to quickly do a quick presentation on their findings there and any kind of steps moving forward.
Thank you.
Well, the clerk's handing out a copy of presentation. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. The city manager asked that I give an update on some of the information and the results of the Craven Terrace inspections that we did earlier on in the year in April. So, I just put together kind of a timeline like I would do with other things. We tear down buildings and whatnot, ask for demolition ordinance. So, in August sixteenth, twenty eighteen, we received, staff received a phone call from the tenants living at units X-two-hundred and Y-two-oh-two in Craven Terrace. Complaint was regarding a leaky roof. We immediately made contact with preservation management and found out that there were also other residents who were complaining about the same types of problems. Preservation management at that time said that they would contact the company, look more closely at the issue and try to resolve some of those things. On ten eighteen, twenty eighteen, building permits were issued to Belfort Property Restoration to replace interior wall coverings as a result of water intrusion, intrusion from Hurricane Florence. It's a long job. Expected completion date is end of the year, December twentieth, twenty nineteen. In January, the resident living in unit A-six stopped by our office, by the inspection's office, and talked to one of our staff members about a few issues that she was having. It was the issues with no smoke detectors, mold, leaky refrigerator, and an insect problem in unit A-six. We were, at that time, we're told we're going to receive more information in the form of photographs and things like that that never, never accumulated. In, on April fifteenth, twenty nineteen, we made, staff made contact again with preservation management. I'm sorry. I should follow along with me, right? Here I am. And we were scheduling an inspection of the three units that we had complaints on. That was X-two-hundred, Y-two-oh-two, and A-six. We scheduled that inspection for April the twentieth, for those three units. April the twenty-fourth, sorry. On April the twenty-second, I received a phone call from Troy Smith of Warden Smith. He was inquiring about the four-twenty-four inspection and requested of me that we add more units to that inspection. Those, I guess, units that preservation management was also having issues with. Those units were E-fifty-five, J-ninety-one, J-ninety-six, R-one-forty-nine, and K-one-oh-one. On the twenty-fourth, we conducted, we conducted the inspection. There was a complaint about mold as the inspectors were there, and the areas were pointed out to the inspectors. Those areas were actually at fluorescence, which is a salt deposit from moisture intrusion into, into the drywall, into the area. There was a small area under the stairs in unit E-fifty-five that may have been mold. There was a leaky drain under the sink in D-thirty-three, and units A-six and Y-two-oh-two were both missing smoke detectors. We made preservation management aware of these deficiencies. We gave them approximately thirty days to come into compliance to do so. That compliance visit is scheduled for this Thursday, May the thirtieth. And that's where we stand.
Mr. Mayor, one of the things I just noticed is that if a resident came to Development Services on January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, and stated that they didn't have a smoke detector, and when they went and evaluated, A-six is still both missing a smoke detector. That's why I said I felt like that they needed to be here so that we can talk to them and see what they have to say about this. Because, I mean, we got, you know, our report, but we're, when we, that's why I feel like we need to have a special call meeting because they need to answer some of these questions so that we can help our citizens that reside in Craven Terrace. If a fire was to happen from January twenty-second to now, there was no smoke detector. I mean, that's a problem to me. That's someone that's living in, in, in a, in a home that's not conducive to their well-being. There's no, there's not even a smoke detector.
Do you know if the person that was living in the apartment that had no smoke detector, did they make a complaint to management about not having a smoke detector? And was this one of the smoke detectors that was just because the battery was bad, they disconnected it?
I don't believe it was. Matt, was it gone? Was it not there?
They have a hard-wired smoke detectors.
Okay.
It had to be physically unplugged, removed. So, if there were other ones in the unit, it was just a leak.
So, we don't know if they contacted?
I don't know.
Find out.
Can't hear. Matt, they can't hear, so he should come with a microphone.
Matt, come on up and just re-stay where you said.
So, when all the repairs were made in there, what, about two years ago now, you know, everything was outfitted with hard-wired smoke detectors. So, in A-six and the other one that was missing, one of those is a vacant unit, but I think both of them were only missing one smoke detector in each unit. Code requires one in each bedroom and outside each sleeping area. So, there were other working detectors in the unit. There was just one that was, you know, unplugged and was missing.
So, I guess I'll direct this to you, Attorney Davis. So, if preservation, oh, preservation management don't comply with the findings from our Development Service Department, how, are we limited to what we actually can request them to do by law? Or what?
We are. The statute and our code provides for a penalty if they, if they refuse to comply.
And is there a time limit for them to comply?
Yes, ma'am.
Other than?
It's in the order.
Very similar to everything, all the other minimum housing stuff that we do, the same process.
So, your follow-up meeting with them is this?
Thursday, the following inspection, yes.
Could you just drop us an email or something like that?
Sure.
And see if they, so we'll know whether or not they complied and everything? Is that appropriate?
Sure.
I feel like after that, we still need to have some sort of special meeting and have a conversation with the representatives of preservation management and the staff or, you know, just because there needs to be a resolution for the residents that came and poured their heart out. And I feel like we should have a standard and we should, even if we don't have jurisdiction to lay law on how some of these individuals are living, they should still know that we are taking this very serious and that they should be held to a higher standard of how these individuals are living with one, two, three, smoke detectors, mold, leaking roofs, refrigerators, insects. I mean, regardless, these individuals that live in this area in Craven Terrace, they need someone to speak for them because obviously, like they said, they're afraid to speak out. And after this, I'm still getting people that call me saying that they're getting evicted and all these other issues. And I've reached out to Ms. Michelle, and she barely responds. So, at some point, when are we going to put them in, on the chopping block?
Okay, I would like to ask Mr. Davis just to maybe chronologically, again, refresh the board and the public on what transpired from it being with a House authority to where it is now. And while we're all concerned about the quality of life for all residents in New Bern, would you explain the contractual arrangement as it is? And, and before he does that, Mr. Ruggieri, were eighty, I don't want to put a figure on it, but were some of these Hurricane Florence related and what would be a reasonable period of time to make repairs and the whole process from insurance and, just go through that process. And then, Mr. Davis, if you could, give us a chronological, were some of these hurricane related?
Well, they were stated they were, though the leaks began before the hurricane that we were getting complaints about. However, they have an active permit now, scheduled completion in December of this year to get all, the roofs all taken care of and all those leaks taken care of. So, it's very consistent with how we would handle any other complaint. We filed the complaint. We get with the owner. We let them know what's going on. We give them an opportunity to fix it. We give them ample time to correct the deficiencies. And if at that, when that time comes, if it's either corrected and we're all good, or it's not corrected, and we move into the penalty phase.
Okay. So, Mr. Davis, could you kind of?
Yes, sir. Maybe I can be a little more helpful in explaining that the, the nature of the ownership of a structure doesn't drive what, what the standard is for minimum housing. We have We have a state statute that lays out the minimum housing requirements. Cities can adopt them or not. Cities can't make up their own. So New Bern has adopted this state statute for decades now, and we enforce that state statute. And those are the minimum standards of housing. Citizens are free to make a complaint about the condition of their residence. They just simply call inspections if they're unhappy with their conditions. Staff will go out, just like in this case, do an inspection. If that inspection raises issues, staff can then call a hearing. It's a legal hearing where the owner shows up at the hearing and answers the questions and those parties come to an agreement, if they can, about how much time it's going to take to resolve the issues. Whether they agree or not, the inspector has the authority to enter an order and does enter an order, giving the owner time to, to make the repairs. Something as simple as a smoke detector, maybe fifteen days, maybe ten days. Something as significant as replacing a roof, maybe six months or a year. But that order is entered, it's a legal order. If the owner doesn't comply with it, penalties are imposed thereafter, and those penalties get quite high very fast. So that's the process available to everyone. So I would encourage folks, if they have a problem, just call inspections and staff can just have to take care of it.
I want to ask you a question to help, help me. I'm not going to speak for the board. At times I have residents that call me concerned about their enterprise, electricity, water sewer, or their tenant less or less the relationship and any evictions, et cetera. That is not part of the scope of my, 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 as an elected official, that's not what I think is my scope of office.
Right, yes, sir.
I, I do, pretty similar to what you just said, I ask that they get through the appropriate sequential means of just, just cause for this resolution, resolve.
Yes, sir.
So could you correct me if I'm doing anything wrong?
Yes, sir.
Or is that the process, or what am I not doing, should be doing different?
Well, I, I think directing folks to inspections is, is the only thing you can do. The city has no jurisdiction to address tenant and landlord disputes. That, that's not what we do. We have a court system for that. So if it's a quality of, of your housing, a leaky roof, a dangerous condition, and that you can't resolve with your landlord, of course, ask your landlord first. If that doesn't result in anything, then staff can get involved and see if there's a problem. And if there's a problem, we have a beautiful process for that. Beyond that, we simply don't have any legal authority to do anything different.
So, and, and let's get away from, let's stop that there some way.
Sure.
If somebody has a complaint about the eviction process, et cetera, what, am I on dangerous ground to get involved in as an elected official?
Yes, sir.
And what, what should I, what should I recommend to that besides you need to get, get counsel?
Yes, sir.
What should I do as an elected official to try to help resolve that?
Yeah, I, I think advising them to find counsel. And, and we used to have the, the Panico.
Legal services.
Legal services, and they might have moved to Greenville.
Yes, they did.
I'm not quite sure about that, yeah. And that's really the only free option a person has if they have a landlord-tenant dispute.
Oh, well, for the record, when I get these calls, I forward them to Michelle. I don't, you know, as an elected official, get involved, so I just want to make that for the record.
Perfectly, yeah. Sending them to the landlord with, with a direction that if they can't resolve it with the landlord, and this is again, this is the, the condition of the housing, not their rent was late or the, the power's not working properly, it's, it's the condition of their housing. Go to landlord first, and if that doesn't resolve itself, then take it to inspections.
I mean, my, my last comment would be, I think it's the confusion that at some point in time, we were, we did have jurisdiction.
No, ma'am.
How, how do we not, if we had the housing authority?
Never have, no, ma'am. It's called the New Bern Housing Authority, which is terribly confusing. I've got those calls my entire career. Poor name. But we've never had anything to do with it.
So why did the board have to vote on the decision of the transaction with Craven Terrace and the housing authority?
That's in the statute, and I'm, I'm not sure why. I have no idea. It's just a, a procedure that's required by the statute. I think it had to do with the bond financing.
We were debilitized on that, but we, we didn't do it for, to get it through.
Yeah. But it's terribly confusing for citizens.
Yeah. Well, I was just confused.
The name of the authority suggests that we are in charge when we in fact are not.
Right, but the mayor appoints the.
We can be in charge.
Yeah, we could have been, but I'm saying the mayor appoints the individuals, right.
To serve on the directors, right, right. But, but that's it. That's where it begins and ends.
The Board of Alderman can determine its structure. It can be an independent body, which it is.
That's right.
It can be a department of the City of New Bern.
That's right.
Or it could be part of a redevelopment.
Yeah. The city created it. I mean, that, that's what's confusing also. The city did in fact create it all those years ago.
We have counsel for the, for Craven Terrace, and at this time, if, if Mr. Troy Smith would like to speak, and we'll allow that, that is the pleasure of the board. Mr. Smith, would you like to identify yourself and your address for mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the board. My name's Troy Smith. I'm a local attorney. I've been involved with the restoration, if you will, of Craven Terrace for a number of years before it was even brought, before the attention was public to this board. First off, it's clear there is a lot of confusion, and I'd be happy to help provide the facts if that's what the board wants. One, the proj- the project is practiced. City of New Bern has no more jurisdiction over that project than it does over Tryna State's apartments or any of the others in town. That property is under a long-term lease, privately restored and operating. The funding for that was obtained from private sources. If the city in New Bern, to my knowledge, would never have put a dime in it. The reference to the bond issue is, is correct, and you are the city in which that exists. And this business is about a higher standard. I really don't understand. They're ju- the folks out there, just like me and you, they're citizens of this community. They're entitled to every right and also to exercise every responsibility that the rest of us are. As a practical matter, to give you a little bit of a thumbnail on where things are right now, there was over six million dollars' worth of damage done to that restored development by Hurricane Florence. Five million of that is being paid for by the private company's insurance policy. Somewhat over one million dollars, the private owner is pulling out of its pocket to put that back in condition. The restoration is costing significantly more than would have been the case if the developer had done the efficient, practical thing. There were a number of units that were basically uninhabitable. The developer has staged fifty units at a time, that restoration, as opposed to having the folks who were residents there simply have to leave, like a large portion of this community had to do, to find other residents somewhere else, either in the city or beyond our city limits, at their own cost. I understand that. I left my house, what's left of it, the day after Florence, and I'm not back yet, and I'm not complaining about it. It's my responsibility to look after. And there are thousands of citizens in this community, and really across the county and Cartering, who are in much worse condition than I will ever be in, in that. A number of them will never, during their lifetimes, recover. Be that as it may, the developer came in and is spending excess money to house as many of those residents as it can while this restoration is going on. It's going to take, as Mr. Rosieri said, at least until the end of the year to get that job done. And it's a practical matter, and I, I really won't say this because it's affected me. Your city manager, your department heads, and the city staff have been magnificent, starting the night of Florence, with what they did in their jobs, getting this town's infrastructure underway very early. They had never experienced anything like this. They weren't prepared for it, and you weren't either. So that's not a problem here. The practical problem is, I would submit to you, that this board really doesn't understand the extent of damage to this community in this county. It's, you are a policymaking board, as well as a legislative. It would be interesting if you have the time to visit what Charleston, South Carolina, did after Hugo. That board down there did not spend its time conducting what mounts to a municipal Jerry Springer show that went on in this room back in April, notwithstanding the valiant efforts of Alderman Odom, who was presiding that night. Unfounded allegations, I mean, it was, if you don't remember, look at the tape. Not one of you said, wait a minute, we haven't heard this before, why don't, why haven't you gone to where you need to go? Because the staff is the only one that has, whether it's the inspection staff or the other stuff, they're professionals, and they have the expertise to answer those questions and arm you with the facts.
Are we allowed to interrupt?
Beg your pardon?
I said, are we allowed to interrupt?
Sure, you just did.
I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but I represent Craven Terrace, and I've been there during the hurricane, boots on the ground. I've been inside of these units. I have friends and family that live in some of these units, and I have had them take the steps to speak to staff, and they've made comments that some of the staff are not very nice to them, so they don't feel comfortable any longer speaking to them. And so my next option is I give them Michelle's number, because that's the number that was provided to me during my tenure as Alderman, so they do go through the steps.
That, that is very appropriate. I don't have a bit of problem with that.
But you can't say that we, we don't understand the process. It's these citizens want someone to speak out.
All I can say is that you talk about growth in this city. If I'm bringing potentially an industry to this community or just moving here as retirees, I've had, and I don't know that anybody's ever raised this with you all, I've had comments from folks about, wow, I've watched the Board of Alderman and the kind of stuff that they allow go on. You need to get the facts, but you need to get the facts before it runs, you let it run amok in front of TV because you've got, Evergreen's an example, Preservation Management is an example, of people who have done things, invested in your community, and provided for our citizens, and they don't get a fair shake. And that's all anybody asks because the best way to run the press is to come in here and you'll allow anybody to say anything unchallenged. It would be interesting to see if you had a policy, and that's up to you, of having topics provided to your city manager and staff ahead of time. So you'll have the answers from your staff at the time it comes to fruition in those meetings.
Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, I want to make a comment here right now, too, before it jumps my mind. You know, we have a, we have a policy, and it's called the first meeting of every month. It's called requests and petitions of citizens. And they are given four minutes to say whatever they want. It's their time as part of the democracy of the United States of America, and it's called free speech, that they can come into this courtroom and they can say whatever they want. Most of the times, we don't answer them. We just allow them to unload on us, and that's pretty much what it is. They're upset about something, something's bottom, but is there four minutes to, to practice their free speech? Our response to them that night, they did that, was we were concerned, we would contact Preservation Management, we would get them the information, and, and that was, that was it. But we cannot stop citizens from coming in here under our request of citizens and saying what they want. I, I don't see anything wrong with that.
Nobody ever suggested you stop it. It seems to me that you might have handled it in a more adult manner, but that's up to you all.
How do you go?
But the bottom line is that Preservation Management and Evergreen are private businesses in this community. They want nothing more than compliance. You saw that I asked for a review of more units than, than were the number that were planned to be reviewed. I didn't do it out of curiosity. I was trying to do it out of, and the staff was kind enough to add that to their list so the facts could be identified. That's all. There is no higher standard. It ought to be high for every citizen of this community. And I would submit to you that Ms. Bell's here on behalf of Preservation Management. I was asked to come here on behalf of Mr. Brian Poland, who is the president of Evergreen. You want to have a meeting and learn about it? Let us know. We'll have anybody, anywhere, anytime. I appreciate you listening. If you have any other questions about what the facts are, I will be happy to provide those to you, if I've got them. And if I don't, I will be happy to provide them to you as quickly as I can get them in the next forty-eight hours. Thank you.
As far as I'm concerned, and I apologize for this, I feel like I am an adult and I do my homework, and the citizens have right to answer our questions, whether they live in Craven Terrace, Trent Court, Kensington Apartments, Colony Estates, if they want to come here and make a complaint about something, we'll listen to them. If they feel like they haven't gotten satisfaction, we'll make a call to a department head and say, can you help this citizen? And I believe that's all that we did. You know, we directed our building inspector, based on the complaints we received, to check something out. I get complaints every day from citizens, and every day I work with city management and city staff to look into those complaints. Whether they're valid or not, someone has asked me, that's my job, that's what I'm going to do. I will tell you, you have a fine staff. Ms. Bell was just recognized as the Service Coordinator of the Year for the whole Preservation Management System. So I know she knows how to do her job. That's no disrespect to her because somebody complains. People complain about me. They should look into it and find out if it's true or not. That's all we're doing. I don't believe we disrespect. I don't believe we disrespected anybody or any business, but that's what, that's what our job is. That's the way I feel my job. I'm sorry you felt that you had to come here and say what you said tonight, but I don't apologize for my behavior that night. I very professionally listened to the concerns of the citizens of the City of New Bern, and our result was, Mr. Building, if you have problems, we'll get the building inspector there. Every citizen has the right to call for the building inspector to come and look at their property, whether they own it or not. That is, they have the right to do that. That's all I think we did.
But they had to be invited in, correct? You know, I mean, we don't do inspections...
Yeah, they can't just bang on the door and come in.
Without them being invited.
But they can, but it's rare that we need to.
But as a renter, a renter could call up the city and say, would you please send a building inspector to my home?
That's what I'm recommending. Just call, and we'll come inspect.
Mr. Stevens, did you have anything else under your report, sir?
I think that's enough, sir.
If you would, sir, update the public on your hurricane meeting. I think you have planned for June 15th?
Yes, actually, it might be better to have Foster. Foster's the one that's kind of been coordinating that, but our plan is to have what we're calling a Hurricane Preparedness Expo. We're targeting June 15th as the date. That's a Saturday for us to have that expo. We're inviting multiple industry representatives to that particular exposition, so that they can help our citizens and inform our citizens on ways in which they can prepare for hurricanes and hurricane season. So I'm going to turn it over to Foster real quick. He can give you some updates. I know he's already got some commitments of people who are coming and desire for others to come, and I know he sent out an email to the board requesting y'all's assistance in trying to reach out to even more people. So I think it's going to be a great thing for our community, so.
Yes, so the Hurricane Preparedness Expo will be held on June 15th at the West New Bern Recreation Center from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. We will probably have about 50 booths available for as many vendors that have an interest in coming. This is a no-sell type of event. We just want folks to give out information. So we've been talking to a variety of folks. The Red Cross has already committed to be there. The Indiana Way will be there. We're working with places like Jill's Pet Resort and the Maine Society to come in, because we had a lot of issues with pets. We want to work with Lowe's, and just a variety of folks, people that help mitigate the disaster with mold remediation and things like that. We want that type of folks to come in, as well as the churches who provided aid and assistance. Any of those that you can think of that would have an interest in wanting to show what they can do in case of an emergency, that's who we want to be out here for this event. So we think we're going to have a really good crowd for this, but we think we're going to have a lot of good vendors, and it should be very informative. So if you have any questions, be happy to...
I think you had a question.
Is it open to nonprofit and for-profit?
Yes, it is. Any businesses, as well as nonprofits and government agencies.
Have you contacted the CCDRA, which is the Craven County Disaster Relief Group? Because they have an emotional support team that might be very good for this...
We had a meeting today, and that group came up, so we are reaching out to them, yes.
Any other questions, the board?
King's great idea, thank you.
Okay, great. Let's get that thing advertised every way we can, on Channel 3, Facebook, everything. Mr. Stevens, one other thing under your report, if you could. Could you update the board on the community rating system? Are we still stuck at eight homes that need to be resolved?
I'm not exactly sure if Jeff's made any kind of progress. I believe that's probably where we are, because it's funding-dependent. And if you recall, as part of the budget that you just adopted tonight, we have funding that has been set aside in that budget, so that we can address those issues. So as soon as we hit the ground running July 1, I know that Mr. Ruggeri and his staff are already working as best they can to try to get those things in place, but we will have the funding mechanism start working on that.
Do you have any estimate on when you could get the, the city compliant, as to where we can get back on that? In other words, do you, do you think July 1st by August 1st, or could you give us some expectation on that?
I don't think August 1st is probably an expectation to be looking at, but as quickly as we can.
Yeah, three months.
Three months, maybe, is what Mr. Ruggeri said.
Is there a board's desire to expedite this item, or do you, anybody else have any comments?
Well, the issue is not our desire. The issue's going to be the workers getting there to do it. And the problem is, it is difficult to find contractors, if it's an HVAC issue, if it's a construction issue. I know personally, and I'm sure we all have felt that, trying to get somebody there could be months in the making. So yes, expedite it, but you have to be realistic in can you get the people there to do the work.
And I don't know the exact date in which the direction was given. I know it was not too long ago, but the board has kind of given me that direction already, to expedite as quickly as possible, which means we're going to try to, we've identified them. It's been, the money and funds have been put into the budget, and as soon as that rolls around on July 1, we're going to get rolling on trying to get that, that work completed. And I think we're down to a very minimal amount of homes. And of course, we've got to get the compliance in place, but we have to have also the individuals who own those private properties agreement for us to do so.
Okay, is there any other questions of that item? Do you have anything else, sir?
No, sir, that's it for me.
Start off with some new visits with Alderman Bell.
No, believe it or not, I don't have much to say tonight after that conversation. I just heard, I really don't have much to say.
Alderman.
None for me.
Alderman, ask.
Nothing.
Alderman, guess.
No, sir.
Alderman, best. Yes, the Veterans Memorial Day Service was held on Monday of this week at the National Cemetery. It was a honorable and a patriotic service. The crowd, there was a large crowd in attendance, even despite the heat. The citizens of the city and loved ones and friends came out and showed up, and it was, it was an awesome program. I was very honored and privileged to be there. Chief Summers and myself, we represented the city, and I think we did a great job. And I just want to thank the city for the beautiful memorial reef. So it was, it was a very good occasion. And secondly, I guess, Mr. Troy Smith voiced his opinion, so I'm going to voice mine. I will reiterate, along with the comment that Ms. Alderman Bingham made, if any of my constituents, any citizens of this city, contacts me, calls me, whatever, and has an issue, concern, or problem, and they want to come and voice their opinions to this board, that's their right. And however we handle it is the decision of this board. But I did not make any comments when he was speaking, because I felt that it wasn't necessary at the time, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Odom?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Okay, at this time, do we need a closed session?
We do, Mayor. Briefly, pursuant to 143, 1311, 83, to maintain our attorney's client privilege, and pursuant to 143, 1311, 85, to discuss the potential acquisition of real property.
Submove.
Motion and second. I want a favor to motion to say aye, or oppose to say.